I think just on technical today, Ben. My video camera's not working at all. Sorry, Ben. Just sitting there, just looking at him.
But you never saw me, did you?
I put my back to you. What's it happening?
You're wearing jeans.
It was chocolate, yeah. I couldn't believe it.
Hey, hey, go back now, baby, it's called a bitch.
Who's the first move, something for two thousand and one, struggle with this?
The Friday. And then sort of together then. Four, there, six, one, two, that right, one, two, three. It's a donkey, ready for it. He keeps dropping, she's there. Do you want me to? Yeah, invite the other ones, members of the public here. Yeah, but they, you just shouldn't get there.
No, you didn't, did you?
No, it took like four or an hour for everybody to get into meetings then.
Was it south glass, was it?
Well, it was a south glass, what?
Oh, was it?
It's very round, you know. I do want to buy that. I can say again.
I've got to say, I'm happy for you.
Yes, thank you. I don't like that today. She's allergic. Yes, yes, I was just trying to get Rachel to her.
Well, I'm a little cranky then. Let's just pack on the chairs. Up to thirty started.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's quite short, gentle, good.
So, welcome to everybody from, who's in attendance for the meeting of the full council meeting on whether that's part. First thing is the emergency evacuation procedures, I don't need to go through that, people familiar with it, no. Recording and filming, I guess Fab's doing that, yeah, what a fact. And then apologies for absence, you have anything?
Yes, I have, Councilor Terry Carl, the Council Andy Ward, open store meeting later.
Okay. Application for dispensation, any new dispensation by council?
I think we're the least submission.
Okay, what? No, what? Any submissions for the public, it's not on the agenda.
Yes?
Yeah, 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 no.
I'm sorry.
Any submissions from the public, which is not on our agenda. Any like a speed? Any submissions from the public, we'll go next to the, we have done apologies. And then any applications for any new dispensations by council? Appropriations by members under the Bill and Act nineteen seventy two, that part of it, have the right act?
Yep.
Magnificent from the chair, there's no magnificent, there's nothing going on to the last, is it? I can talk back. So, we've confirmed the minutes of the meeting held on the twentieth of January.
I've got a couple of minor. Page three, seven point three, forty two, I said. As the activity said, the manager hopes to organize a meeting, the skeleton has to agree, top two. Good one. Or is it agrees two, or so, no comment.
Beautiful, you remember we put that one, that was my last, I've got idea I can find out for you. Yeah, no, I think, I think it, yeah, to discuss this further.
Yeah, hoping, just a comment on what we make on.
So shall I, so shall I just add in there, hope to organize a meeting as per agreement?
Yeah.
To discuss this?
Yeah.
Yep.
On page four, I just wanted to make a note of the private protest by the Royal Council. And just to say that the one part of the private stuff that still touch it is to play there. A stormy day, the boat, the boat that, the law conservative, the protest, thousands of players, the note. Got those five.
No, I'm not going to make that, I'll make you up another one.
No, no, but that's just a thing.
Good point, Roger. So, do we have somebody who can propose these?
Yeah, I propose it, one second.
Have I proposed, you have a second, are they in favor of the approval of the minute?
Thanks, thank you very much.
The younger one, let's see if he can get on first. Could I?
You, Matt.
The fact, you go on, please.
If you wish, we'd like to hear about that.
I can't do that. Can you help me, please, the fact?
Sorry, 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 sorry.
Deal with matters, number seven, item seven, deal with matters arising for the minute, held on the twentieth. One was, which was not covered elsewhere on the agenda, which is seven point two recommendations of the two thousand and eighteen Bratley Stoke campaign. Panning, next stage, state party development, included, put in the interior containers, completing of landscaping. Project four and the equipment.
That's just ongoing, okay.
There's nothing?
No.
Okay, that's ongoing, so there's nothing on that one. Seven point two recommendations from the last nineteen Bratley Stoke planning meeting. Seven point two, on Bayes Court, activity centre, face damage, grass, growth, rain, at its free school, play area. Would I, we should perhaps do a article for the year round. Want to go on that one, Bill?
Yeah, we've got two questions, so that's not enough to consider it.
Oh, it was all a huge difference, but. I mean, why are we waiting for it, it's just a mere? You know, but if you can't, they can't be bothered to come up with a thought, it's good for them.
I think I have been, yeah, I have been, I normally go for about five, ten minutes.
Yeah, very sure. Okay, so that's ongoing. And seven point two two, Bayes Court, activity centre play area, designing the small new play area to reflect this, is it, Bill?
And obviously, I'm hoping everybody's read the report, there are a couple of things on this one I'm trying to ask. One is to get me to resolve to have possibly two people become signatories for the application. And the other one is after advice from Rachel, the financial change, it was a discrepancy raised. I mean, kind of, sorry, the report's quite large. On page two of the report, there's the financial position that Rachel can be piece together. The budget options that she suggested to consider is in the event of no further external funding is secured, we've got options one or two. Which would be number one, to maintain the maximum budget of quotes at a hundred and five and increase the BSPC funding from seventy five K to seventy eight K. Back to cover the landfill funding. Second one is to reduce the maximum budget quotes from a hundred and five to a hundred and two. To account for three K landfill funding and maintain and the agreed BSPC funding at seventy five K, Matt.
Well, you expect it to be about three thousand pounds being there or not being there?
Because the guard, in the front, on the front of the report, it does suggest that we have to pay this ten percent third party contribution. And that's the three thousand pounds that needs to be paid up by twenty eight days prior to the work commencing.
Or we won't get the benefit of that?
No. So it's which one, project options, whether you have to go with option one or option two, that in the event that we don't get any extra funding.
I think it's option two. Thirty five pounds. You think I'll submit more?
So there's a proposal on the table to, I just will give the option to go for option two.
There's a second part to this, in the event of further external grant funding, there's an efficient application for fourteen thousand one hundred and ninety five pounds with Ipsop Inner Work Trust. And this question is, in the event of further external grant funding, if it is secured, options three or four, number three, this will increase the maximum budget to quotes one hundred and five. By any additional grant aid secured and maintain the BSPC funding budget at seven five thousand pounds. Or option four, to maintain the maximum budget quotes a hundred and five and reduce the BSPC funding budget seventy five K by any additional external grant funding secured.
Do we know how certain that the additional grant is from, in a good form?
It's one that was recommended by the first grant aid that we applied for, so it was recommended that we apply for this one too. I was, we were waiting, we should know by the twentieth of March whether we've actually been successful or not. So we've definitely got the thirty thousand, it's whether we get the extra fourteen thousand one hundred and ninety five.
In case we don't, that's why I would say option two.
Option three or four?
What do we get, what do you think we could get, that extra, so if we kept our, if we increased the maximum budget on the basis of gain additional funding? What do we think we could get for that extra funding? What type of equipment would we think we could add, or what do we think we could use to enhance the scheme?
What you have here, I mean, if you're going for, we've gone for option two, Pat, and you say, you're thinking of this, or like a three thousand pound discrepancy, isn't it, in option two? But that's not going to make a huge amount of impact on the actual quotation of the equipment. We could suggest that we have, for example, say, the safety surface could be not colored, so it could be black, which would reduce the price to, I think. That's just tweaking the specification, but you're not necessarily going to get any, you might use a couple of smaller pieces. But three thousand pounds is really worth it.
I think it would get additional three K, which is off the cost of store, with every one of the two, probably, if I had to.
I think I'm gonna say, I think it's more than three K.
So there's, there's two options, the first one is, if we don't get any extra funding, what do you want to do for the three thousand pounds to pay? Do you want to maintain the maximum budget at a hundred and five and then increase our budget to seventy five, from seventy five to seventy eight, cover that three K? Or you want to reduce the maximum quote from a hundred and five to a hundred and two? To account for the three thousand pound landfill funding and maintain the agreed BSPC funding at seventy five thousand.
Yeah, what is proposed two, isn't it?
Yeah, so that's in the event of us not getting the extra money.
Yeah.
If we do get the extra money, so it's not an or, it's an and, it's a and, if we get the extra money, do you want to go to option three? Which is increase the maximum budget from a hundred and five and we still pay seventy five? Or do you want to keep the budget at a hundred and five and reduce our contribution by any extra additional external grant funding that we get?
I personally agree.
I would agree. Keep our budget as is and then you'll be up.
If we get additional funding, it could go for our.
Yeah, make a saving.
Contribution, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, we've got option two and option four.
Yeah. By the way, down to both option two and four. Whenever they go to second, I go to the, Roger, just, oh, sorry, Ed, I think Roger just stepped into the post. Sorry, Ed.
Oh, it's all right, we're done with it.
You have a, another go for it. Okay, so those in favor of the proposition, options two and four? I think it's a bucket.
Seven minutes, so that. Tom, Ed, Ed, P, Franklin. Get by, Don. Don is not favoring anything, but five here, here. Six, seven, eight in favor. Again. Abstentions. John. Okay, that, lovely, that's the last one, that, that's the answer. Yeah, and then the other one is to agree to have two signatories to be named on the agreement for grant funding. You've got the sample funding agreement here, the technical that the Inner Work Trust need to, at least two councils with signatures.
Anybody else want to go a signature for the grant funding?
Yeah, because yours, James, you'd be perfect for that.
You'll cherish your time.
Yep.
There's pleasure, thank you.
Yep. Or fine, charity fine, that, Ben?
And, and they, I think.
Oh, my chat.
Tell me you've done that.
Okay, tell me that, okay, go for that, Ben?
Yes, fine.
Okay, so do we need an approval on that?
Yes, can I go propose one second?
So somebody needs to propose that.
I propose, I propose.
Oh, from me also, it is proposed, Roger. And those in favor of that proposition, just for the signature? Seven more minutes. One.
Five.
One.
Nine in favor?
Nine in favor, again. Abstentions. Oh, we've got abstentions, we've got, okay.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't, I've been out at the meeting for five minutes, moving my computer to another room.
So, right, we go on to the next one, which is seven point three. Recommendations from the twenty twenty strategic planning meeting. Seven point three, one, redevelopment of the Brookway Activity Centre main building. Yeah.
Yeah. I've made some communication with the scouts, they have been really busy, so it's been difficult to meet up. And we've talked about the idea of ruling out storage containers potentially going in the area. Ruling that out by making possibly a pre-application to South Worcestershire, just to make sure that that's not an option that we could have. And then looking to the option of extending, so it's putting in possibly two pre-applications, just to make sure we know where we can best spend that money.
Well, that's what then I was going, the final application, we did not want to do storage.
That's outside of the building, isn't it, outside of the footprint?
Especially, you know, what was it, rusted away, right?
Yeah, there are, there are some really good alternatives now, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we just put it on our, including it on our footprint, yeah, with a nice storage container that doesn't actually look like a storage container. With proper clarity, it might be a much.
I don't know, I think we should rule out, if people wish to, find us, find us, we'd be interested in that. We should go for a brick, for.
Yeah. Okay, so.
I'll propose that.
No, great, at the moment.
If anyone's a little bit free as well, secure parking.
It's on the report, it's on.
Sorry, it's on that bit, yeah. I'm just, I'm just a bit general.
The vehicles at the moment have come back to Jubilee Centre, we've got CCTV cameras on them after a recent attack. We've also, they're up here, so they're not visual, they have directed on them. And at the moment, this is something that we're, we're for the redevelopment of Brookway.
The fact that you've got CCTV cameras on them does either guarantee no theft or the police will take action if there is.
But at least it's a bit more deterrent, a bit more hideous, no?
That's probably a remove up here. So, okay, do we move on then, there's no real recommendations for a bit from that. So the next one is, the seven point four.
I do apologize, I was wondering if you'd noticed that, I only kicked up from that today.
Okay, so seven point five, adoption of the Bratley Stoke campaign of volunteer policy. Now, I don't know, I think Ed might want to say something about it. Ed, you want to say something about his adoption of the volunteer policy?
Surely, there was contention over this when we had an earlier meeting. So I took time out to redraft one from the beginning, and this is it. This was taken in consultation with Sharon and other government documents that gave indications of what it should look like. So it's not just me doing it, it follows the format. Obviously, it's been passed around to other persons in the volunteer organizations that have added their comments on it. Now, I disagree where lines should be crossed out when it's saying suggestions, because they shouldn't be crossed out until it's actually been agreed that that is crossed out, that's the first point. However, I hope you have read it or taken time to read it, because this is a volunteer policy that I feel is for Bratley Stoke. It's not for the wider area and it's not for any other government department, it's ours, it belongs to us. And I feel in us as councillors, we look at it and put into effect what we believe is fair and right to do. And that's pretty much it, really.
What are these people volunteering for, it was actually, do you know?
It would be, well, potentially, who knows, it's just all sorts of things, so there will be some healthy, yeah, litter picking, it could be healthy fireworks, fireworks, stuff with. You sound, it could be all sorts of things, yeah, so.
Yeah, I agree with what you're saying there, Roger, there's this caveat within it, you're saying the pollings not being financially disadvantaged by volunteering. And reasonable expenses such as bus fare or moilage should be offered, what? We don't get, we don't get paid anything? We don't, we don't get paid anything?
Yeah, you could, could have come up with a bill as well.
We do it because we're a volunteer.
One part is, as a member of the community, he doesn't have. No, he doesn't, doesn't have, I mean, doesn't have the financial civility that, I mean, I can volunteer my time here, but that's okay, if I'm financially okay, I can, I can do that. But if there is a member of the community who was just starting out or has a very disadvantaged background and didn't have financial stability to volunteer. And they needed to pick up bus or something, and they incurred an expense trying to help their community, is that another way to look at it?
We suggest that we should be, that's good.
No, 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 I'm saying you can't.
Maybe run along, see, you know, all these, you know.
But it is reasonable, I mean, wouldn't it say, somebody to say, oh, I have to go and buy a car and then.
Exactly, and it does say that, that before approving any expense, a volunteer should seek permission from the town park, get the town park, what he can develop. So it's not part plant for them to wrap up that, yeah.
You're not going across the town park, cancel a fortune, if someone comes by a bus, it's five pounds for a day ticket.
The, the problem, Michael, is that we've got no limit on what is reasonable expenses, there's no limit put on it.
I think one trusts the town parks judgment on that matter.
Well, but it's, but it's still open ended, there's no finite word, okay? Ed, Ed, what did I say, Ed?
Yeah, one I wrote down about the expenses, first of all, it wasn't in there. It was just that you volunteer and you take it as it is, because you're volunteering. If you have the capabilities to meet that volunteering, and the example I use is.
Your screen's frozen, Ed.
Is, it's an extreme, but it, I think where we can draw a line is that we set a limit. And say, we'll give compensation for a daily bus ticket of up to five pounds to help. And if, the other thing is, if we have volunteers under the age of eighteen and they are not working, then what do you want to do about that? Because I've just thought about that since re-reading it, that there needs to be a clause for someone or you just don't engage that at all.
I could say that's reasonable expenses for the unemployed, those in the sake of all these.
All the benefits.
Yeah, all the benefits.
And if, if, if not, then you know, well, if you're volunteering.
Yeah.
But you have someone on it, yeah.
Yeah.
But anyways, it's just amended, like, it means that anybody can take more, okay, we'll pay that.
Yeah, but we wouldn't pay it last day.
What about a process for having visibility of what's been gone through, so much as we see petty cash statements and stuff like that? There is, if there is a volunteer expense, it's included in a report like that, so it is coming to council, you can see it.
It would, it would come to council, I mean, like, yeah.
You're speaking about how would, how would we see it?
It would, we pay that of petty cash.
At the moment, it's part of opening, who defines what is reasonable? That's the issue, that's the issue.
That's an officer's job, isn't it? Who, 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 that's a proper officer's job.
I think we should rather insert, um, any expenses that, um, that volunteer in care shall be reimbursed. We don't, reasonable need to be explained, so in order not for us not to go into detail. We could just put in there that any amount incurred, the cost of the volunteering will be reimbursed.
I do acknowledge.
But the reason why they give the county, the officers, the ability to scrutinise what's put forward, if they don't agree with that.
But you guys agree with it.
Well, someone has to take a decision on the reason, yeah, is it?
And I also, I wonder whether you should, um, potentially take out the, where it says receipts produced where possible. I think that, that where possible, actually, should be removed, you have to have a receipt.
Yeah, yeah.
I can't think of the expenses, I think you might have got a receipt.
No, but I think it's perfectly reasonable, even if it was a bus ticket, yeah, you'd have a bus ticket. I don't see, I think, I think it's realistic to, to have in, insist that you have a receipt.
Ed, Ed wants to say something again.
I, I think, I think the answer was earlier, that the volunteer we expect is within Bradley Stoke area, the catchment area of Bradley Stoke, and a daily bus ticket is five pounds.
From York or something.
So, realistically, you could set it at five pounds, and now you have an amount for it. And if somebody wants to take a taxi, instead of catching a bus, well, they, they overstep the mark. But, you know, there's a limit, I think that where we can start handing money out, uh, we will volunteer. I, I, I volunteer being a councillor, the same as you gentlemen and ladies do. And I don't get compensation, because you, you're doing it for the community, you accept that part. So I think, to be fair, if we're going to have it in there, that we, we give you, we give the access to the bus service. Five pounds, you get the bus there and back, you know?
Okay, it's proposing, that's our second bit.
Just a second, I'll put Ben.
It's just that I'm, I'm much more comfortable it being, you know, evidence-based of what they've actually encoded as a cost. And then the reasonable, the reasonable element being defined by a proper officer of the town council to sign it off. I get what Ed's saying now in terms of you expect local volunteer to be, like, but, I mean, you could equally come up with a scenario where, I don't know, there's an elderly member of the community living in Bradley Stoke, and they've got a child or whatever, who, well, not child, but they've got a offspring who lives outside the community, who comes into this community to do volunteering here to better, better their environment that they live in, but I think we've got. I just, I just, I feel a bit uncomfortable being very strict about it, other than saying an officer should make an assessment at the time based on circumstances.
I think they're absolutely, they're, and, and. But equally, if we're getting certainly assumption that that is possibly going to happen, I, I just feel we just need to make a decision, rather than it just being open-ended, expect for, which it could be. You know, somebody could come up with less than simple math, you know, the voluntary Bradley Stoke, what do you think, they're all fair, and, uh, happy from the station they're here?
But that's where the, the officer has to make an assessment based on what's, I mean, I mean, for it. So if they're looking at huge expense, or you wouldn't.
Sorry, Ben, it is, this, this more in scenario, it could be an old lady, you're going to say, and it goes to the door. It's an open-ended scenario. I'm saying, I think he just needs to determine this, but if he put a limit on that expense. Otherwise, it's, it's open-ended, they basically say, well, yeah, you're the same. And so that defeats the bit of the volunteer.
Ed has suggested a five-pound figure, and I would second that with the proviso that the officers have the power to look at anything outside the norm, as Ben has suggested.
It, it does say here in the policy before, you know, incurring any expenses, the volunteer should seek permission, or will seek permission, not should. They will, they will seek permission before they incur the expense.
Perhaps it's worth putting a sentence on, which says, it is anticipated, perhaps, that volunteer expenses would be no more than five pounds per day.
Yeah.
I'll have to do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
What was that, Michael? Yes? Well, my man proposed that, that reasonably, that there'd be no more than five pounds per day, with, with, uh, a receipt.
Yeah, so can I, I'll take out the where possible bit of the receipt, yeah?
The receipt.
Have a where.
I definitely second your action, I'm proposing my suggestion.
Sorry, go on, is that one?
Are you going to propose that, Ed?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so let's just propose it, Michael is going to second it, are there's in favour?
No, I'm just going to, I just put a trace or challenge.
So it's, it anticipates volunteer, or it's, or not, it's been five pounds per day, yeah?
Yeah.
That's mine, yeah? I think that, you know, it's a little bit of a, it's a little bit of a meeting.
Right, so, is amendment to the financial regulations with more revealing amendment to financial regulation, letter number ten.
You have that in your, yeah?
I'm just going back, that was a type of gap, it was on, one eight point one. Insurance with ETS instead of BSJ.
That's, yeah.
Oh, well, that's, that's tricky, wasn't it? It's tricky, wasn't it? I guess, so it is approved, we have a test for it. Okay, thanks.
We're up to, um, this aspect of seven point two and eleven point ten. Are we happy with the wording of that?
Seven point two, so, yeah.
And then the eleven point ten has been that, we, we ran that past now. What happened, the word change from that for our beginning?
But we're still applying the, the, correct?
Yeah, you're doing, doing that, the human directive, it's now public, with your amendment, EU exit regulations.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay, fine.
So are we happy with this, um, financial regulations update?
Yeah.
The council's proposal, Ed, seven point eight, Ed, there's a.
Please. That's the last one, thank you. There's a message on, I've just seen from Rachel. She said she's having major problems.
Right, let's go to the next one then, which is, um. Yeah, amendments to standing orders seventy eight, three point three, and seven, moving amendment decision point seven, eight. For eighty eight, to ensure that standing order seven eight along with the financial regulator.
I thought one thing I'd like to suggest, if I may, in eight, right at the foot of the front page. Um, I think it's better to read, um, unless a case for alternative arrangements is presented.
Oh, for alternative arrangement.
Yeah.
I don't know, Michael, we spent hours on this.
So it's hoping, maybe or not.
That we would make sure that we do not have, we put the council jeopardy by ten or things up.
I agree.
Yeah, it just wants to add it in the words for alternative arrangements, up, that unless a case for alternative arrangement is presented.
Then, then you're making that case, which defeats the object, what we're trying to do.
No, it doesn't, because the case is still there, I'm just defining what the case might possibly be.
It's, it's, you think the object that that particular effort approaches, can you just repeat what you said there?
Well, initially, all that time.
Just, just for, we need.
Right, um, in the, the last line, um, it talks about monthly or quarterly basis, unless a case, and after a case, I would like to suggest the words for alternative arrangements be inserted. Yeah, that's the word.
No, I think it just clarifies what it means by a case, it's supposed to be a super case, or.
Isn't it able to be clarified? Yeah. It'll have to be presented full title, right?
Yeah.
As it's like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we want to propose that, if you amend the, uh, point eight, which the word in which Sharon put down. So, there's a favor of that amendment?
Sorry.
Date?
One dent, but, eight, nine in, no, eight in five for one dent.
Abstentions?
We lost one, we lost one.
No abstentions, okay. We move on? We do?
Many minds, um, yeah.
Um, seven point eight, all sites, gas and electric review. Is that again, Bill?
No, not in Rachel, possibly.
Just give that a little, a little, thank you.
A bit of man, perfect, I'm getting it, oh. Getting there.
Rachel, are you there?
Well, I think she is, because, yeah, she's in the meeting in part, but I don't think she is.
Okay, well, we'll have to move on, maybe try and meet her, because she might have been active, we need to find the meeting on. We'll leave this one to. Absolutely, so I need to.
Rachel, can you hear us?
Come in.
Can we leave this seven point eight until the last, and then if Rachel then can come into it, we'll talk about it.
I want to choose to let you work, yeah, yes.
Let's move on then to item eight, um, to receive the minutes of the financial meeting on the third.
Yeah.
And then to receive the minutes of the planning meeting on the twenty seventh of February, twenty fourth of February.
Yeah.
And then to receive the minutes of the, the meeting on the fifteenth of February. We'll receive all those. So updates themselves, George, your council board members, if we start from perhaps Roger, you.
Uh, the other thing is, uh, Brookway, uh, speed, which, which, we've talked to you, and we're bad as well. And whether we took the header first, we can, probably, government's a lot, four hundred years. He almost said, uh, we could like, we enjoy the place, but, but, but. It's not needed, they came back, that, uh, that most people had their misses on their desperate crossing, so, uh, decided to raise that as a platform. But not for the speed, which, I swear, it's just, just a monitor. So, so.
And the, the, the thing across it, I have to say to you.
No, we're talking about the, 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 yeah, which they say is dangerous. I mean, that's the way it's been, right?
Yeah.
It's probably safe, isn't it? There you go, we, we haven't been arguing. Um, there's one other thing that, uh, we, we expect, a lady from Goodham, her daughter couldn't get a place in, uh, Bradley Stoke Farm School, even though she was helping. And, uh, so, I went to South Bloss, and, uh, like, I'm doing it. The word transpired, it's schools, it's, it depends on the size, they're good to have. And the number of features it, but, hopefully, I haven't checked, that will be, uh, received by, we're all going back on the eight.
So that was, that was with, uh, the just taking care of.
Yeah, 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 she was, uh, she was helping her, and she was struggling, because, uh, I'm pretty tired. Anyway, that should have been received by yesterday.
Yeah.
I'm not going to, I'm still going there, hopefully.
Yeah.
But, uh, I was surprised, you know, that, uh, they did take the children to help. If they said, you know, but, haven't got that picture, they've prepared reports, despite what they're doing, but.
Okay. Very sorry. Did you go to, uh, Franklin, do you have anything from that procedure?
Uh, just, just a quick reminder on, uh, search testing, which I believe everyone is aware. Uh, notably, we have three postcode which relate to Bradley Stoke, BS thirty two O, BS thirty two eight, and BS thirty two nine. And then it's, the testing is taking place until this Sunday, there has been an extension, so for, fourteenth of March. And for collect and drop tests, we have until Tuesday, the sixteenth of March, to return them. So if anyone has any case which needs to return, and which will extend their announcement to resident, for them to return their kids. Thank you.
Thank you, President. Uh, anything from John?
He's, he's not there, he's booked.
Anything from, uh, Kate?
Yeah, sweet, um, can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Okay, um, interesting meeting recently, last week, with, uh, the boy scooter people.
Oh, yeah.
Sharon's, uh, written comments on behalf of part of the town council. Uh, I've had, uh, a reply back from, uh, Clive, uh, the, it's Clive somewhere, or the inspector. Uh, saying that, uh, they will be doing some form of monitoring and enforcement, uh, which they're not going to ban around to us at the moment. But nevertheless, they will probably be doing an announcement like they do with the, um, speed cameras, the camera van. And, you know, obviously, when they do put that comment out, that will be telling anybody on a scooter, legal or illegal, whichever the case, to be on the lookout, and they will be issuing warnings, and, uh, any wrong traffic offences will be taken up. Uh, however, the police remain officially, the line is they haven't got any funding or any, well, appetite really, at the moment, for doing any enforcement on scooters. It falls very low on their priorities, the policing. Um, but nevertheless, we do have issues, as you all know, uh, with the positioning of these scooters. And also the, uh, obvious, you know, uh, illegality, if you like, of underage, eighteen and under being on these scooters, even though they've got to officially be eighteen plus and be in possession of a licence. Now, how they're getting around that, you tell me, but.
I'll tell you, I don't know, well, well, Kate.
Clearly, somebody, somebody is putting their licence up, uh, for somebody to use, to get on the scooter. Now, obviously, we have seen incidents of two people being on the scooter, which is illegal. Uh, they haven't got any indicators on them, which is something the police want to see, and I understand from the latest response. And I understand from the latest response from the local news, scooters will be rolled out with indicators. Um, but I s- I still question the, uh, people that bring them out to site. The fact that they are leaving them clearly in areas which, uh, narrow pavements. And make it difficult for people to get out their drives and things like this. There was somebody on Facebook, a locally owned Bradley Stoke, who found them, uh, off his drive. He couldn't get out, so he promptly picked them up and threw them on the grass perch. Now, you know, perhaps he could have been a little bit more, uh, precise in what he said, maybe he rolled them to the grass perch. However, he said he threw them or there was some, somebody claiming that they were thrown. So, now, you know, I mean, obviously, this is about a lot of feeling. Uh, I simply asked on behalf of Steve Reed at the meeting, our, uh, you know, cabinet member. If we could provide some photographs, now I asked them if photographs on Facebook, I promptly received a death threat. And I also received a comment, grasses get slashes. Now, you know, if that's the sort of comments that you can expect from trolls. You know, if you want to grass us up for being on scooters, you get slashes, all right? That's what that means. Not very pleasant, is it?
Um, thank you, Keith. Um, just, uh, a way around, oh, first of all, what's the situation if somebody's got a provisional licence? Which they could have on at seventeen?
That's correct. That's correct.
Are they, are they letting people on at seventeen if they got provisional licence?
Well, I think that's a question that needs to be answered for boy, but they're clearly a lot younger than seventeen. Kids who are being photographed and being seen are clearly fourteen, fifteen years of age, perhaps even younger. And, you, you know, I mean, obviously, they're saying now also that they're not designed to be driven on any pavement. And that includes a shared pavement. Now, if that's the case, I, I still question why they're positioning them on pavements. Because you've got a ride from a pavement, in other words.
Yeah. Um, I'll tell you how they're actually getting over it, because I saw it actually happen. I couldn't take a photograph at the time. And it's the parents are using the app on the phone, using their licence, their debit credit card. And that's how they're doing it to let the kids get on these scooters.
And they're saying.
I saw it in Fosden Row, uh, a few days ago.
But they're, they're trying to maintain, this isn't happening and, you know, anybody that gets bound, crouching roads, three counts and you're out. Well, you, you know, if they're underage and they're already committing traffic offences, look, riding around, riding around the banks the wrong way. Blocking the whole width of the road, stopping people from getting round them while they're swaying in and out. You know, these are road traffic offences. And, you, you know, it does beggars belief that, you know, these things are designed officially for the highway.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
There has already been somebody killed, by the way, Tony.
Really? Honestly?
Celebrity killed on the weekend, I know Davina will call, uh, made comments about, uh, you know, obviously a colleague. Uh, I don't know if it was here, it may have been somewhere, some other part of the country, London or wherever. But a celebrity has been killed on one and there was also an incident in Hembry, I believe, that's Brady. Where one was involved in a RTC or an accident with a vehicle.
It's, uh, just for regularities, RTC now, they don't call them accidents, they call them, uh, collisions.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, Michael, back to the same woman.
I'd just like a question, uh, Keith, because I think you're probably better informed on this than I am. If it's a, a powered vehicle and it's on a road, shouldn't it by law be licensed?
Yeah, yeah, you would have thought so. This is why, Michael, at the meeting, there was someone attended from Aiden and Somerset at Portishead. Who is, uh, you know, doing more monitoring there. Um, and there's Clive, our Clive somewhere, our inspector. Well, you know, when Clive said, uh, we haven't got the funding and we haven't got the time to be policing this or enforcing it. Bear in mind, there are some councils that have had the police funding funded by the scooter company. Now, there's been no, no mention of that happening here in Aiden Somerset. And, you, you know, obviously, as I said to the guy at Portishead. Look, we're hearing one thing from the police here, our local policeman, that we haven't got the funding and we haven't got the manpower. And we haven't got this as a priority at this moment in time to be enforced. Now, you're hearing quite openly and seeing by the responses of the public and the photos. That there are road traffic offences occurring. So are you saying that you're not going to police road traffic offences? Because if you are, that's a very dangerous situation. Have we got to wait for somebody to be killed?
Yeah, thank you, Keith. Any more questions, uh, sorry, any more, uh, things from John Asher, it's not here, it's, uh, I saw it again, it's South Gloucestershire.
Brian's not here.
But Brian's not here, no. Okay, so let's move on to the, um, is Rachel available now?
Sure.
Check, Ed passes up. I'm sorry, Ed, I missed you, sorry, yeah?
Yeah, sorry, I, I was hoping to have concluded that part. So I do have a question. Are we as a council able to ban them in Bradley Stoke? No, just say, not interested, not having them, they're banned as far as we're concerned?
It's completely uncertain, isn't it? Nobody's asked this council or even consulted with this council.
Yeah. It's all been put in your head, it was. I think that they're just polite to it and done anyway.
Yeah. That's a very good point though, Ed, I, I think, you know, seeing as we are in a pilot scheme. Somebody's got to make the decision locally on whether or not we do want, I mean, Bradley Stoke or not.
But I, I, I would vote down them. There, there's, there's no regulation around supporting it. Uh, the, the initial take up has just shown how ludicrous it is. And the wayward types are enjoying it because they see a free ride, pardon the pun. And anyone that gets away with being naughty will continue. So I think you've got to nip it in the bud, just turn around and say, okay, there was the opportunity, you had it, you fudged it, you're not getting it. Sorry, this council are not put up with that kind of behaviour in, in our, um, in our environment. We like a nice, safe, happy place, we don't want anyone going through distress at all, or bad. So ban it, I'd just say, absolutely ban it straight out until something better comes along.
Yeah, uh, perhaps we could make that recommendation to South Gloucesters.
Well, it's, it's on the agenda for planning environment, because it came up with planning environment in February, so I've done, I'll do a, I'll do an update, so, yeah.
As you heard from Sharon, it's on the agenda for the planning meeting next, uh, twenty fourth of March.
Yeah, the suggestion to, if, if the overwhelming feeling for councils is actually we don't order them to plan, then I hope they reach the author.
Okay, so have we got Rachel?
I think, like, can you hear me?
Can you turn your volume up a little bit? You can turn your volume up a little bit, Rachel.
Is that better?
If we go back then to the, um, seven point eight, all sites gas and electricity review?
Okay, you have to bear with me because I was trying to get online on an iPad and phone and none of them wanted to play. So I just, I, I wasn't sure where we were. So you've got the report in front of you, I have got a bit more of an update on this. Um, so we, three year fixed term contract for our gas and electricity for all sites, uh, ends on the thirty first of October. We started looking at this last November, um, after we were approached by, uh, several broker market that were saying they might be able to get. Um, get us tied into an early contract now because, um, there are expected hikes coming, um, in, in the utility market. Um, so, uh, we, we've gone through, uh, several rounds of this and then, um, I think it was January, no, December, finance. Agreed that, uh, we would, um, trim it back to a final two being Regency Purchasing Limited and Consultative Utilities. So, um, on the report there, it's the broker recommendations from both, I gave, I gave both exactly the same spec. Uh, Regency, uh, purchasing, um, are the, uh, the company that then go out and a- approach other, um. Uh, companies in the local area or, or from my understanding, sort of, those that have been recommended. Um, so, so, uh, they're not actually, uh, the broker themselves. Um, so on, without going through all the, uh, recommendations and everything from, uh, each of the brokers. Um, on page three, there is a summary of the quotes. And attached on the back is, uh, more in-depth information of the individual, um, amounts per site. But, uh, we, we were quoted. The back page does not include, um, what they call C P L, which is the Climate Control Levy. That is a tax that's put onto, um, certain higher usage, um, gas, um, utilities. So, uh, we would pay that for base costs, I think it's base cost and jubilee centre and for all the electricity.
Please speak up, please, Rachel.
Um, I'm, I'm speaking as loud as I can, is that better?
Yeah. It's bad.
All right, so, um, page three, um, it's, that's just basically a summary and that includes. Uh, the C P L charges, um, so that we have got a clear picture of the total costs. Um, shortly before the meeting as well, funnily enough, uh, Consultative Utilities, uh, phoned me. And advised that they have managed to fit this price if council wanted to go with it, uh, with total gas and power. Uh, so that, um, uh, if, if it was up through tonight, we could action it tomorrow. And total gas and power will keep this exact quote fully open and frozen until Friday. So, um, I know that was quite attractive for, um, council, um, when we were considering this previously. So between the two of them, there isn't much in it cost-wise, uh, three hundred and fifty one pounds a year. Uh, so, uh, Consultative Utilities, we know that, um, that is going to be the price based on. On the, uh, guaranteed usage that we provided. Uh, the broker recommended by utility purchasing, uh, it's an indication they cannot give the price until we actually, um, go into the market on the day. So I have, uh, put forward a table of quotes and cons and they were both very good. Um, so.
So what, what you're saying is it, we're going to ignore Regency Purchasing because it's, they're, they can't guarantee it right this minute, but they can guarantee it on the day. And they're considerably cheaper.
Well, no, I mean, I, I put the pros and cons there, I mean, um, it, it, it's a council decision, I, I put a recommendation at the end. Um, on the last page, there is, uh, I've also put the budget position. And it clearly shows that at the moment, I'm on that floor of the future that we do decide. There is likely to actually go up because this is based on the year just gone where we have had to dispute, um, for this reason. Uh, but, uh, within the focus that we have gotten forward plan, we could go with either. So I just set this up in exactly the same, uh, format of our pre- open fee book plan, um, with, with just pros and cons. And, uh, I mean, I, I personally put one of the pros as being that, you know, that they can guarantee the price. So you do know what you are voting on, bearing in mind that the prices are going up.
Rachel, I mean, there's a plethora of companies willing to provide electricity and gas, tons of them. Why do we only go with these two?
No, um, what these brokers do, they each go out and look at about thirty different companies.
Oh, all right.
The, I mean, it, it's like, um, any other broker, they don't just, um.
This is the best they've come up with, is it?
These are the best ones that they have come up with and it is interesting that they're both pretty close.
When you say both, there's three?
No, on, on page three. Um, on page three, the summary of quotes between Consultative Utilities and Regency Purchasing. Once you add the climate control levy on. Uh, Consultative Utilities is coming in at twenty four thousand eight hundred and seventeen pounds. And the broker recommended by Regency Purchasing is coming in at twenty four thousand four hundred and sixty six.
Yeah, just a bit kind of fractionally less.
Three hundred and fifty one pounds a year difference, so, I mean, that, um, you know, so, so at the end of the day, it, it's up to council. I've put the, the pros and cons there, um. So, I mean, I, I, I recommended Consultative Utilities purely because the price was so close. But they could guarantee that price, um, whereas Regency Purchasing, they cannot guarantee the price until we go into the market on the day. Now, normally in the financial regulations, um, um, utility, um, contracts. Don't need to enter formal approval because they, you know, sort of, they are very fast acting. The reason this is put, has been brought to you is because with, you know, our current contract does not end until the end of October. So that's why it has, has been brought, but, um, they were both very competitive. So I just thought the edge was that we have a, you know, we know what you're voting on, but, you know, it happens a little bit. I mean, at the end of the day, you haven't got to tie into anything now at all. But, um, all the signs are that the prices are going up. So that's the reason that this exercise was carried out.
Jenner?
Yes, uh, Keith?
Yeah, um, firstly, I'd just like to thank Rachel for the work she's done on this exercise. Um, I, I have one concern, now, at the moment, Ofgen, uh, have announced, haven't they? That, you know, prices, well, and the companies have said their prices are going to go up. And only today, in fact, I had my electricity one telling me that mine was estimated to go up by about a hundred and fifty pounds this next twelve months. Now, um, the one thing that does occur to me that got said last week. Was that Ofgen have ruled the companies to pay back a large sum of money and it's going to go back something like ten years. For overcharging. Now, do you think, Rachel, that the town council may be affected by that?
I, I, I couldn't say for certain, but generally, the overcharging is true errors in the bills because there are a lot of errors. We do check ours.
Yeah.
We regularly check the, uh, the metres and, and that then generally is checked against the original contract that was agreed.
I mean, more and more people now have smart meters and, you know, your technology put in, but, you know, what they're implying is. Is that the overcharging has still gone ahead. And I know cases, certainly with the water meters and various other appliances where, you, you know, meters have been racing and all sorts of things. Now, obviously, this is very alarming, but, I mean, let's hope as a town council then that we're going to be told that. We've got a big, you know, refund coming our way, then we might have to worry, will we? But, um, but I just wondered. You know, yeah, I mean, it's a big hope, but, you know, who is going to keep on, you might get one, Roger, you know? But, you know, I mean, obviously, they've said it, so if they've said it and implied it, that, you know, this can go back ten years in cases. Then certainly there's going to be, you know, big payouts being made here. And I dare say, if they make big payouts, they're going to have to, you know, fill that big gap with, uh, they're going to find in their finances.
I won't, I won't get a payout, Keith. I won't, I won't get a payout, Keith, I change mine every year, so.
Right.
I, I was going to say, we've gone with brokers for a number of years.
Yeah.
So, you know, but they're the qualified, uh, people. Um, we've also had some very, very keen contracts, um, and the fact that, you know, we, we do lodge our meter readings, although all of our, two of our meters across all sites are now smart meters, uh, but we still check them on a monthly basis to make sure that the bills are relative to our usage. So I wouldn't rule it out, I would love to have, um, uh, money into the void plan, but.
Well, you wasn't good on it.
You know, not, not with the different anti, that's practice.
Well, I think as Rachel said, we haven't got to. We haven't got to move on this at this time anyway, but, you know, if we, if we are looking for a, a move on this, then I'm certainly prepared to move, uh, what Rachel has suggested.
Um, the one thing is though, if you go onto the very back page, which is the climate comparison, all of these quotes have been fixed on the date being correct on the first of the third of twenty one.
Yeah, yeah.
And Regency Purchasing are the cheaper.
Yes, and so that price that they have in there, um, so, uh, total power and gas, um.
Not guaranteed.
Uh, the total power and gas one is guaranteed, but the Regency Purchasing isn't. And it's, uh, another major thing was, uh, that I did, did look into it because I'd never heard of British Gaslight, so I did actually have a look on, uh, across the internet and, and it does appear to be from the information that I, I got hold of, that, that, uh, it, it's like an economy version of British Gas, which is aimed at, at, uh, small to medium-sized businesses that generally have one site. So, um, we'd have to have multiple accounts with multiple logins as well to, to run those and it is completely online, you cannot deal with them in person, it is completely online, which did worry me a little bit, bearing in mind we've got public buildings, you know, um, and also if, if there were, uh, pricing discrepancies or a problem, I, at, at times it's very useful to get a faster, um, 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 to prep things, um, faster to be able to speak to somebody on.
I, I did use Regency Purchasing before, they're a big buying group, they're huge, they're all over, please make your mind finish, they're a big buying group which, which operate all over the country and your link with this particular, uh, gas company or whatever is through Regency Purchasing. They actually check those bills, all of that.
Yeah.
Is part of their, is part of their agreement.
But the same thing with working with Consultative Utilities.
Well, what, so, you said you have got contacts that are still online, but your contact is with Regency Purchasing?
Yeah, yeah, but.
If there's a problem, Regency Purchasing will sort it out.
They, we did actually state in their, um, what's it saying? Uh, in the recommendation, uh, just so you know, they did actually highlight, please be aware that it, it is all done online for British Gaslight and therefore the billing in every account here are online only. That is the only reason, that's, that's true, that was the only reason why I then had looked at British Gaslight.
Yeah, Rachel, sorry, I think you're missing the point. Regency Purchasing are a buying group, of which, if they actually monitor whatever company you're dealing with, and if there's a problem, they deal with it on your behalf?
Yeah.
But it actually saves you any issues of having to bring anybody or speak to them. Your contact is with Regency Purchasing.
As is Consultative Utilities, but I, perhaps I read it wrongly, I took it where they've actually said, you know, it's online only, but that would leave us high and dry a bit, perhaps I misunderstood.
Yeah, you, you're not when you're dealing with Regency Purchasing.
Okay.
I dealt with them, so I, I know, that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
Yeah, we can't guarantee the unit price from the very date, so it might have gone up ten percent by that one.
Yeah, but, but these are all based on the same time, on the same date.
Yeah, and based on the same date, but it's not guaranteed, but.
They're, they're.
Here it is.
A good thousand pounds figure.
But not a thousand pounds, I don't think.
Yes, twenty-three thousand four hundred ninety-four, twenty-two thousand nine hundred fifty-three, twenty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty. What's it?
We've got, uh, twenty-three thousand and sixty-eight pounds twenty-nine and twenty-two thousand seven hundred and seventeen.
Yeah, what's it?
And, um, I've had an article with CCL on, on the table of, um, um, table three, um, which is coming out with a, a three, three hundred and fifty-one pounds difference.
You say these figures have been exported to CCL?
Yeah, yeah.
For all of them?
Yeah.
Because they're in a match.
So it's, this is for all of them?
Apparently they never, when.
If you compare some of it, the back page.
No, it's back page, that's just done the work things on it.
But this with the CCL added in, it's going to pass the difference.
That's the cheapest quote from both of them, with the CCL added in, which is the same that Rachel's got in her report, it's three hundred and fifty-one and twenty-nine per annum is the difference between these two quotes, the two best quotes.
And you've got, uh, guaranteed.
You've got a guaranteed price with one, or you've got a risk with the other one?
Exactly.
So whether you're willing to risk three hundred and fifty-one, twenty-nine and spend that or get a better discount than Regency Purchasing come back with a better price when Rachel locks it in, that's the, that's the question.
They give you a price on the day.
Yeah, there's potentially, yes, that would be cheaper.
It could be, couldn't it? Could be cheaper or expensive.
Yeah.
It's a risk you want to take, yeah.
But why didn't you do it then like, if they are cheaper, you use them, if they are more expensive on the day, you use the other one?
Because it has a bad-looking error for, um, Consultative Utilities, otherwise I would, but with, it, be, because, um, to get the, to get prices out with the agenda and send the, um, the meeting thing a week later, most companies won't hold price for that period of time, that, that's, that's been part of the, the problem and, and that's why generally utilities aren't included, um, you know.
That's why, that's why Regency Purchasing say they give you the price on the day. Well, you could, you could ask Regency Purchasing on the day what that price is and then you, you say, well, okay, you've got all day, you know, you go to the other two and say, look, if, if those two are, are cheaper, use those.
It depends how fast they come back, I mean, I could try it, um. I have got a hospital appointment tomorrow, so I, I am until three, so if I can fix, fix all that.
Can you doubt it?
Yeah. No, it has to be tied in for Friday morning.
Jenner, we've not run this quite a lot, can I move that we go with the opposite recommendation? We go with the fix, but frankly, I have bigger, knowing what we're going to get, whereas on the other one, we are rather buying a big enough thing.
I'm thinking that probably if you just get helicopter for a call.
I'm trying to second you, Jenner. Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Oh, if that's what you want to do? You want a bedtime?
Yeah.
One, three, five, six, seven.
Tom?
We see it, so, so, yeah, 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 one, two, three. Five, eight, that's what it's called, eh?
Okay, now.
We'll get that. Right. How good money, two government inspectors.
Uh, with me. Right, um, this is linked to the, um, um, annual internal inspection that is carried out by, uh, councillors, um, in order, um, that council are in, in a, a, a position to complete the annual return with the annual audit when that comes up, um, um, in June, um, just to, i- it's in addition to the internal audit. So, uh, Ben and Tony, uh, were nominated, uh, last year and we had the internal government meeting on the twenty-fourth of Feb. Um, the inspection was carried out in, uh, two main stages. Uh, the first stage reviewing the financial risk schedule, which highlights the financial internal controls and procedures and risk management. On the second stage, reviewing the effectiveness of the internal audit and the report. Um, and then, uh, we have got a third item here, which was the final consideration indirectly linked to the internal audit and internal controls concerning procurement and that's further on in the report. So the financial risk schedule, um, Tony couldn't make it, uh, unfortunately, sort of due to, um, sort of work demands, um, but you, you found and spoke to Ben, didn't you, so I.
You know, I, I tried to get into the meeting on a couple of days, I couldn't, because nobody would answer a phone and eventually I did speak to Ben and having, um, read all the, uh, various procedures and I put my comments to it, I don't want them.
Okay, um, and hopefully we, um, managed to summarize those in this report because , uh, Ben, Ben, sort of, passed through the information. So, um, um, in short, um, the, uh, you were worried about our possible weaknesses and procedures linked to the use of fuel cards and the council vehicles. Um, so it was about those additional controls were needed to ensure a council and its staff are protected from any misuse or perceptions of misuse. Um, the fuel cards have been running for a number of years, they're already capped and are specific to individual members of staff, the use of specific council vehicles, which are identified by their registration numbers and the cards are only accepted at specific outlets and, and mileage has to be declared whenever they're used as well. The cards cannot be used for non-council vehicles or the cans of fuel for other council equipment such as the cricket mower and that's why, um, in some of the monthly expenditures you do see, um, fuel for, um, council, um, machinery and equipment, it's because the fuel cards cannot be used for them. So, um, it was noted that daily mileage sheets have been introduced at council's request for each authorized driver to further substantiate the records and, uh, and monthly statements issued from the fuel card company. Uh, the, the sheets will be lodged on a weekly basis, uh, and Dell is monitoring these and they will be cross-referenced with the fuel genie, um, amounts as well, um, so which should highlight any, um, uh, abnormal usage. Uh, the vehicles are also now covered by CCTV cameras, um, uh, currently at the GBE Centre, uh, when they're not in use. Um, and at the time that I wrote this report as well, um, council had requested tracking in, uh, devices to be investigated and I believe that's coming up later on in this meeting. Um, so, I, I, I think that, that appears to be sort of, um, pretty, you know, comprehensive to, to control that list. Um, and if agreed, all the changes would be incorporated within the fuel card policy. Um, so, um, Ben, so were you happy with that, Tony?
The, the only thing which, um, I was most concerned about is that you've got no way at this length of time of recording any private use by a person who uses a particular vehicle.
But it shouldn't be.
If, if, sorry, if, if they use a public vehicle for private use, then that's a payment in kind, which is a inadvertent use scenario.
Um, but it shouldn't, it shouldn't be using it, it should just be.
Exactly, but what, what do you have in place to make sure that whatever operative it may be not used for private use?
Well, the mileage sheet, I mean, it is for each journey, it's not, so that is fair, I mean, you know, and the fact that they are capable of CCTV, uh, means, you know, people can't take them home, um, so, so that's cut out.
But during the day, they could go shopping in it.
Okay. I, I don't know what you could, I mean, I, I don't know how you get around that because, um.
But the, what you need to do is that the person who's using the vehicle needs to declare any private units, units.
Yes, but at the same time, uh, going to the shops, they do get supplies, uh, and which part of, and involves using the, uh, council vehicles to get supplies on site, so.
So, a- at the same time, they can do their own private shopping, can't they?
Well, they shouldn't do it, but, I mean, that's outside of my jurisdiction.
Yeah, e- e- exactly, so you need to get the operator to record any private items.
Well, that can go on the market. Yeah, we can put that on the mileage sheet on the bottom.
Exactly, exactly.
So that's a box. That's a, that's a box.
Because otherwise, if they do use it for private use, usage and it's not declared, we are in fraudulent use of, in, within our revenue, because it's a payment in kind and it has to be tactically deducted.
So it's easy, you know, we can definitely add an extra box on the mileage sheet.
What is the, the concern about the expertise anyway?
Well, that was because, um, during the internal audit, uh, Rachel, it was only to query it, not to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, Rachel was, uh, making a case for when she's been out at the moment on all of the sick, it was the only thing that they couldn't necessarily hand over internally and it was whether we, a critical thing like that, did we want to have it provided by a service provider on South Cross Council and there were multiple people who could take on that responsibility inside that service provision, or do we continue to maintain it in-house? And they presented that there were other councils in the local authority area, I mean, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Rachel, I think you'd said that we are the only local town and parish council who didn't have our payroll conducted or managed by South Cross Council, which meant.
That, that, I suppose, uh, we follow the law, yeah.
Okay, and.
So it may be worth looking at, you know, on top of grants as well?
And it's quite expensive, South Cross, yeah.
Just don't know, it was a question whether we looked into it and, and just see what it costs.
Yeah, there's, no, I mean, that, isn't it?
Just.
But we're paying for, um, for safe payroll, which is, you know, that's a, 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 a reasonable cost, so, I, I think it's, it's something that we weren't looking at, I think the management side.
Yeah, probably, yeah. Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, have you answered, Rachel, on that two, on the rest of the internal audit?
Do you want to, Rachel, do we need to vote on the, the two things then for, for that, that first section?
I would like to say at the end of each of these sections, I, I tried to, it's quite in that some of it, I tried to put the actions required, so, um, so it, so the next stage will be to update the fuel card policy to encompass the new mileage sheets. I did put, and tracking devices, but that will be dependent on what's decided later on, um, and will add to include personal mileage, just so it's, I would, I would expect staff to do that anyway, but yeah, if it's there in black and white, um, or ideally not to have any personal mileage would be, would be the, the way to go. Um, or ideally not to have any personal mileage would be, would be the, the way to go, but, um, so, and then whether councils do want to investigate outsourcing payroll, so it's just whether a third agreement for both of those actions.
Right, Ben?
I'm happy to propose them.
The, uh, the actions.
I don't consider them-
Ben, Ben would like to propose to do action that's required. Let's just discuss then, uh, and second or seconded?
Yeah.
And it's in favour then?
Tom?
Hey.
Gaines?
Okay.
Belgium? Okay. Um, yeah, 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 looking at, yeah.
Right, so, so the next-
You got the internal audit.
So, uh, next page here, it's the statement effectiveness of the internal audit because part of, um, um, sort of council's position is, is to make sure that our audits are adequate and effective and forward-thinking, which is why we do have our, um, carried out by South Cross Council, um, uh, they, they don't make a teaser, you, you do have to sort of really, really, um, sort of be, be involved. So, um, it was noted that the in, in-year internal audit reports carried out by South Cross, uh, so the financial controls, which would be evaluated at high standards, being the highest level attainable. It was identified as part of the report that two ex-councillors have stolen names on various bank accounts and bank mandates. It was acknowledged that councils are aware of this and that new mandates have been impacted by the COVID nineteen lockdowns and the absence of the manager. Um, so it was delayed to update.
Yeah, on the previous one, we asked them to be taken off.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, but, but obviously with lockdown and carrying my absence, um, and, and, you know, sort of, Sharon mentioned, he tried to get some, uh, some mandate, uh, up his bank, um, but it, it was virtually impossible, so, um, you know, uh, moving forward, it was, it would also be very difficult to get everybody possibly to sign them because, um, so, um, the shielding. Um, so- So, um, um, I, basically internal audit, so they fully understood, um, and they did recognise that there was no, um, security risks and, and it didn't encroach on any of, um, of council's procedures or the need, uh, to have those signatures at that time. So they put it down as a comment, but, um, council have got to look at changing the signatures, um, in the, in the near future. Normally this is done at the May AGM, but the internal auditor would like them done, um, undusted by the first of June. And if it's agreed at the May AGM, these are quote, um, time-consuming documents to fill in. So, um, I would suggest if council agrees, that signatures are agreed at this stage and we implement them. And then if you wanted to change them later in the year, um, uh, um, then, then you'll be free to. But, um, at the same time, we would then be within the internal auditor's, um, requested timeline. So in my report, I have noted who the signatures are. So Sharon is the signature on everything, um, as is Andy. Um, uh, Marcus and Lloyd then have, um, John Ash and Roger, uh, Brian Hopkinson and Ben. Um, so we'd need to take Nikki Haller off of there. Um, Cambridge and Counties, it's Sharon and Andy, um, they're the two main authorised officials, uh, and Franklin, uh, and we'd need to take Elaine off. Uh, United Trust Bank, uh, it's Sharon and Andy, are again the officials, uh, with John, uh, and Franklin, and we would need to take Elaine off. And, uh, Sharon, Andy, uh, as the authorised signatures, the CPLA Local Authority Cops of Fund, uh, with John Ash and Franklin, and there again, we would need to take Elaine off. So it's whether you want to maintain the core of those existing signatures, um, and/or add additional signatures to any of those, um, bank and investment. I very, very much, most of our banking bases in banking, we, um, we only need the signatures for investment and the odd cheque at the moment linked to investments.
Yeah, I think we just take the people off, uh, looking into the rate, uh, if they, or seconded.
Yeah. All in favour? We've got President Tack down.
Right, he proposed, that's Roger. That's my, my, thank you.
Those in favour?
Yeah.
Uh, Gaines?
Yeah.
A question, Chair, if I may, um, Rachel, do we just rubber stamp this at the AGM?
Um, section that has actually specified the signatures, so yes, because we've done it, um, at, at this point and a decision's made. It, it can just be further confirmed for the year ahead at the AGM, so yeah.
Thank you.
Right, additional procedures to Rachel.
Um, so the, so thank you for that, um, the third, um, and final item, this was the, um, additional considerations linked to procurement and following discussions that council had had. Um, so at previous meetings, uh, procurement procedures are being made by some councillors with particular attention being paid to securing three quotes and levels of buy should be made prior to a decision being made to appoint them for goods and/or services. So as a consequence, I spoke to the internal, um, audit department, um, and I was given a confidential response, uh, that was not for general circulation. But, um, Ben firmly had a copy, um, and, um, the summary of their report that they did authorize is below. So they, they said, um, do you want me to read it all straight or?
No.
No?
No, Rachel, I'm glad in front of us, and we should have read it by now.
Okay, so, I mean, the, 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 you know, they have, they have highlighted that it can sometimes be difficult to get three quotes. Um, they've also highlighted that it, um, sort of, depending on our procedures, it may be, um, worth considering, um, keeping all quotes anonymous until a decision is made. Um, they were, um, asked about doing a specific internal audit on our procurement. Um, the reaction was we've already covered that, uh, in with the internal audit. But, uh, it council still wanted, um, and felt that it, an additional purchasing review was required. They would suggest two days of work, um, and they go into it in more detail, just do more cost checks. Uh, and verbally, um, and I was told that I could, um, uh, release it verbally, um, they would expect a charge of about five hundred pounds a day for that audit. So, uh, uh, I mean, um, the, the structure of a cost of order is included in that support as well. Um, then linked to that, the, our, our response regarding disclosures of suppliers' names, um, it, it's all there. And really, I mean, that's just for council to consider whether they want to proceed with that. So the, the actions required is, uh, to consider what could proceed with the more in-depth procurement audit. Um, and the scope would be, um, agreed at a later date of the, uh, current, um, basic standard, um, which would obviously affect the price a bit, a bit needs to be longer. Uh, and to consider, consider whether to anonymise the name of suppliers for any future quotes. Um, that already happens with tenders, uh, but it's whether council wants to look for other quotes as well. Um, um, if that's the case, whether, uh, further amendments to the financial regulations are required as well uh, regarding obtaining three quotes. Although council did change the wording that you approved earlier in the meeting, so, um, that's probably already covered where you, uh, where you have, um, imposed, um, um, the fact that, um, any quotes, it can be, uh, taken back to, um, uh, the start again and restarted. So, uh, those are, those are the three actions to be considered.
Yeah. There's, there's one fact that I'd like to put in, if I mention to Ben on the quote, is that, uh, the M O B requires three quotes on everything.
Yeah.
And that's just a fact.
Hmm.
And I don't see why we can't effectively work on them to say, but, right, I agree.
We could be the audit.
No, we don't need an audit, we can make that decision ourselves.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you've already written that in, uh, into the financial reg-
Yeah, exactly, yeah, exactly. So I don't think we need to discuss it anymore, really?
No.
No, okay, so, no, I, I mean, when we, when we had the internal government meeting, uh, this was discussed and Sharon, correct me if, if I'm wrong, you did, um, it, it has been a bit, bit more difficult during the COVID period, uh, for my understanding to get quotes offered, but, um,
yeah, I know, it's just things have taken longer, hopefully going forward, things are definitely going to speed up and yeah. We will always get three, if not more, quotes for things, yeah, without that.
Or, or, but, but at the same time, while you've rewritten the financial reg, if there was something urgent, you, you then have the, you have the option whether to proceed on the two quotes if that's what you wanted, but, um, you know, it, it is three quotes.
Yeah, we, we, I think we've exhausted this one, Rachel, we had a very long meeting aside, but yes, we would go with two. And, you know, so we'll stick with that and we'll move on.
Okay. We need to sort of vote on the actions, so, so do you vote, want to vote on no actions to be taken?
Yeah, no action to be taken.
Absolutely.
We're lucky, I think about the ongoing using of suppliers until we've had the full set of quotes and stuff like that.
So, are we going to propose if you do no action? Oh, Roger, Ed seconded, those in favour?
Tom?
Tom, you there, Tom?
Well, that's George, yeah.
Did Tom vote?
Mind if I have your internal audit?
Right, I can, I can with, uh, you this, so, um, I highlight, it was highlighted in the internal government inspection, um, results of the internal audit, so just key strengths, risks and key actions were put there. We've already, um, covered the bank, uh, mandate change and decisions being made and the audit reports are detached. So, if there's any further questions?
No, just say well done, uh-
Well done, Chair, no, Rachel, go.
Thank you.
And ask in the office. No, actually, if you see that one, the, the based, the last sentence which says, based upon this report, Bradley Stoke Town Council has managed to maintain the highest audit standard through a difficult year involving lockdowns and remote working.
Yeah, no, no, that's- And I'll thanks the other members at the start.
Thank you.
Okay. So, point, point three, consider those introduction of business charge cards, charge card policy.
Right, okay, uh, now, uh, this came up previously as well because, uh, we used to have debit cards in the office, but, um, due to bank changes and, um, um, more higher security, only signatures could have debit cards going forward, which completely undermined the bulk of our requirements and our separation of trust. So, um, in March twenty twenty, um, council approved that apple of cards, uh, getting, um, credit cards, uh, because it is also offered insurance, um, uh, against, um, fraudulent, um, um, activity, um, or misuse by, um, any cardholders. So I, um, I went to, um, I, 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 I just watched the summary of the cards, uh, that they offer. The first one that comes up, rather than having a, a credit card, uh, the first one is the charge card. Um, because you pay that off on a monthly basis, so you don't get any interest charges. So that would just be paid a by-direct debit, um, 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 for, for an annual fee of forty-two pounds per annum. Um, that's fixed, um, and there's no additional fee for additional cardholders. Uh, one authorised signature has to, um, have the first card, which would be Karen. And Karen would send the enterprise person to there with the, um, the, the online, um, account. So, um, Sharon would have control over issuing additional cards to, um, the members of staff. Um, uh, we can set limits on expenditure, although, uh, the minimum balance limit for each card is a thousand pounds. That's the lowest that it can be counted, but we have already got ordering, um, procedures in place, um, linked to the debit cards uh, that, um, don't have, um, so much of the limit. So, and what, so what we do is probably set these cards against the petty cash account, like we do already. That has a two and a half thousand pound, um, maximum cash balance that can be held at any one time. That would be more than enough for any card payment, I mean, we don't use them, uh, very much generally, um-
Question, Rachel, what, what, what would you want to use, uh, charge card for?
Uh, I'm trying to, Sharon, but you, what have you been using your debit card for?
Um, not me, or, no, um, what have we bought? Well, going back a while, we bought, everything comes up on the petty cash, so it's all, everything's all out in the open. We bought, uh, the tablecloths or the, um, the round tables, the tea party over the years, we bought the Zoom.
It's all the petty cash online?
It's the petty cash, anything that would, that I would buy online, which actually isn't very often, and actually, I hate using the card online as it is. Um, if we can order stuff through companies where you get invoice, where you get it, then that's fine. But, and yeah, we, we do just let it possible, that's it.
Is it an absolute necessity that you have one?
Yes, we do have to have one. In, in some shape or form, in whatever. Plus, um, like, uh, Jason and Ian will quite often, they'll go to, what's that? Stats, food bits and being cute and buy things, you know, bits and pieces that they need, so, yeah, we do, otherwise we'd be forever going to the, um, cash point and getting cash out, and, yeah, we do need- We'd be forever going to the cash point and getting cash out, and, yeah, we do need something.
And there seems to be a need, what we need to do is decide on which one to use.
Can I just clarify as well, it is in there, within our internal control procedures. Nobody can use their card for anything above a hundred pounds, it has to be authorised. And if it's not, we can hold them accountable to pay that balance.
Yeah, okay, now, I can see the security side of it, I'm just trying to ascertain the need. And there appears to be a need, we just need to decide on which card.
So select charge card is all in favour, is it, Rachel?
With the T P, we're not going to have interest charges. Well, forty two pounds, you know, sort of, rather than the time of people going to cash points and getting stuff.
So instead we'd like to propose that we go with the select charge card. Yeah, Ed said it's proposed in, and Ed seconded it, those in favour?
Tom?
Tom's there, yeah. Attention, what attention? Okay, moving on, the next thing is.
Usage policy.
Charge card usage policy. Rachel?
Um, it's based on.
Based on what you've already said, isn't it? Yeah, okay, let's say it's based on what you've already said.
Right, can I just give up really, really quickly? For on the, on the last page, I had put down A to E avoids the council to agree. So you've just agreed for these sort of, up this charge card. So are you happy that that will encompass items A to E as well? From the back of this one, yeah, back of the report. It's just so that everything is weekly clean and, you know, we've got full control.
Yeah, I think I pick it up.
Lovely.
They'd like to manage the annual review of primary state.
No, we didn't do that. Policy adoption.
Charge card use policy terms in addition.
All right.
Will you have to read it? Okay.
Ed.
Ed, and seconded it, for you, Keith, those in favour? Have they kept a. So we're going to move on to the annual review of primary state, ten guys before the pub lease.
You've got that.
Yeah. Did you want to say something?
Matt.
Matt, yeah.
Yeah, Matt, yeah, would you want to say anything about your football club agreement? Uh, no, not really, I'm just interested to see if the price is going to go up at all.
The, the report that we put forward, it went up to chairs with various options that were sort of based on. Other decisions that council had made, like leases and higher charges heading into next year. And the chairs came back saying that they agreed an increase of naught point five percent. Being in light of councils made under decision for the old cricket and scout leases because. Most towers don't have reduced amounts and dedicated spaces, which applies in this case. So it's increasing the two hour weekly charge from eight pounds fifty to eight pounds sixty a week. I was in contact with.
Eighteen, not eight, yeah, eighteen sixty.
Sorry, eighteen, what's my, sorry, eighteen fifty to eighteen sixty, so basically going up by ten pence a week. And that was to the football club, I can't remember who it was actually.
Yeah, it's myself, just to clarify this, like, you know, I've gone and seen things tend to be, you know, that's fine, we're happy, we're happy to pay the same fee.
Right, do we need to build on that? Okay, so, Rachel, do you propose that? There's it, Ed, and Keith has seconded it, and those in favour? That's unanimous?
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
It's a long way.
Distribution of twenty twenty one primary state council annual report.
Right, so I can do this one quite quickly, so you agreed who would deliver the annual report back in December. But unfortunately, since the acceptance of quote due to a change of circumstances, the individual awarded the job is no longer able to carry out the work. Therefore, I've now got an alternative quote, so your three quotes are in front of you.
No, Bob is.
It's a lot of person who had low, who actually. When I emailed him, he then actually phoned and followed it up and, you know, then emailed back, so, yeah.
It's a case of Bob's uncle, really, Jackson Gaines was quite good, wasn't he?
Yeah.
So that's what they say, nine more. Do we know if Keith's arrived?
Well, hopefully we will see.
Stuck them all in the waste bin.
We don't get delivered, well, he does use GPS tracking, so we can, he will, you know, send them up there, but a timer will tell him that.
I'll go football there.
Do we use Bob on a certain period? Are we giving annual year contract?
No, it's just to deliver the annual report. One on one is one job, yeah, yeah, so if it's not a good job, then obviously we won't back to him in next year.
Definitely by Keith, those in favour? Yeah, unanimous. Um, well, inclusion of traffic devices, we've tried to get ten things to go through. Would you like to comment on that?
I basically looked into getting quotations for exactly what you asked for to get for two vehicles and been reported in front of you. Hopefully it explains quite clearly that each company provided their selling point. I'm not experienced in traffic vehicle devices, they all look very comprehensive to me, they all have bells and whistles. It's not official, it's up to you, you know. You've asked me to do something and you're.
Two vehicles, is it?
It is just a two vehicle. That's track paper. It's the second possibility, yeah. We're going to pay, I have times, yeah.
The object, is that intuitive?
One, one of Bob's, immobilisation. Does that mean the vehicle's solely the whole thing?
Yeah, that's the one that, yeah, I think, I'm pretty sure it is.
I actually installed something like that, we should get a cheaper choice.
All the things you can buy there, it's similar. That's for you.
There is a, either there is a, the immobilisation, so the vehicle is actually stolen. It can't move, so it's added, but we haven't had them stolen, we've just had a big stolen stolen.
I'm thrashed here.
I don't think we have to have it, we should go with.
That's good as well, geocentric areas, what wants to start and finish times?
Currently, you can see when they're going to be good or bad, or if they wanted to go to a bin. If you want to get a little bit of film, you can. I don't have time to do that.
I do prefer the one profit though, as to what it gives you in terms of information, for eighty four pounds, you're probably getting a lot of info from that. Whereas for one hundred and twenty pounds for this, we're getting a lot of stuff there, immobilising. Immobilising, we got so, and geocentric, the area statement never really, you probably say.
On that one, it's on quote two, sorry, on that one, that's not clear, that's quote one, the bank card, then the quote two.
Oh, hundred and forty four. No, it's been, it's been more fine here.
Credit card in a month as well, and mobilisation.
So service level agreement with.
Well, what do you want, those bells and whistles, do you want headlights? Alarms on there?
Well, that's very good, actually, if they've got an S L A to guarantee things at ninety nine point nine 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 eight percent. And it's happening in detail with the S L A, not really going to have a panel to give it.
Oh, it's probably small print somewhere, which that's.
What is the service level agreement?
I don't know, twenty percent, probably.
I'm just wondering whether there's a cost involved.
Put the service level agreement on your hands if the values or the bed goes got changed.
I can find out for you, add it on.
Would imagine there'd be a cost in if the vehicle's got changed, got changed, removed or reinstalled. I don't know, that's a service level agreement, service level agreement just is what we will do, isn't it? They put down in writing what they're offering.
Yeah, it's the level of service that you expect from them, isn't it?
Yeah.
Which some of, I mean, some of that would be when they're guaranteeing up times and things like that. And but you don't, without the detail of the S L A, you don't know if that means that we get a reimbursement for costing, persists to my back.
But what do we need to know? Do we need to know where the vehicle is? The bottom one to do that, I mean, do we need all this other stuff? Great, how it is. I see them there.
But that's the thing, is it, is it, it's two hundred and ninety eight, could it be two hundred and forty eight?
Well, we could afford it, do we need it?
Well, I mean, that is the opposite of reputation, it's not restored, because everything is now replaced, hopefully.
Yeah, why don't we suck it and see what we've done with our parent, that makes them security, finding the input, paying for what we've decided for them. See how it goes, and if we feel we need to get back to the other side.
But just a small question, what about insurance? So could we have a feedback on this for here, if we, would the insurance be cheaper for those devices installed? So therefore, the cost of the insurance production might actually pay track.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so then it might be worth having all bells and whistles tracked up, because you've got the cost back from the insurance.
Yeah, it's worth that, our exercise, just to check. But I think on this particular item, we'd say that we will hold that player.
Yeah.
Though we don't make any decisions. Do we need to vote on that we don't make any decisions?
Well, you could if you're saying to come back for the next meeting, when we found out, or we.
Well, could you come back next meeting after the question?
Yeah.
Just leave it at that.
Yeah, so come back for the next meeting, so come forward. Let's hang forward, I'm sure the patients establish, yeah.
Yeah. Next one is both for two main renovate party majors and sour bed.
This is expensive, isn't it?
Yeah, so if I, I know this, this obviously, this is Dell's report, but, so what we had is. A, a trial area, if you remember, so we put the beds in and then we maintained them for a year. Just basic maintenance, but without any watering in there. But unfortunately, due to lockdown, well, some of them aren't too bad, but some of them are a pretty dire. So obviously, if this is the way the council wants to go to do, you know, nice. Flower beds, then this is the sort of cost.
The cost of food.
Yeah, so we couldn't, we can't proceed with any one quote. It's very unfortunate, actually, the South Loth Council weren't in a position to produce a quote because. Well, actually, that might not be, because that might not be a really heavy charge, because that includes watering, well, that's.
How often do they water it?
Yeah, they're twenty two when you get, as soon as we get some other quotes. Because we're pushing the top of that, we put that one in a bin?
Yeah.
Right, the next one. Quote for maintenance of cricket wicket pitches at Felix Ford Activity Centre.
And we do have a representative from the cricket club at the meeting.
Oh, good.
Yeah, Andy.
Now, does anybody want to say anything on this first? Right, the question I can put to Andy, because I've actually done a little bit of research. Maintenance of cricket squares from various clubs, lovely, and a little bit of all this stuff. And I haven't claimed yet, what council that financed the. Maintenance of a cricket square. All the clubs that I've spoken to maintain their own wicket at their own expense. Hello? Is that it?
I don't know the exact question.
My question is, do you know any other council, that I haven't played for yet. That pays for a cricket club maintenance of their own wicket?
I know, no, I don't, I don't think of any other cricket club, it doesn't interest me whatsoever, if that makes sense. I'm purely interested in our club, I've never played for any other club, I've been here for about five years. I, I, I don't talk to other clubs about their arrangements, we talk to them about how to make good grass wickets. And, you know.
Thank you, Andy, I, I so do, I think about twelve or thirteen quotes. And there's not one of them that don't actually finance the maintenance of their own square.
Is that including clubs that play on the county board? Is that including clubs that play on council property?
Right.
Is, is that including clubs that play on council property?
Yes.
It does?
Yeah.
As I say, I, I'm, I'm not aware of any arrangements from other clubs, I, I have no. I'm just, I, yeah, zero.
Effectively, like, we're paying sixteen thousand pounds to maintain your, or our piece of ground, but for your use.
Uh, so, these, you've come from?
And what I'm saying is, is there's not another council that's doing that.
So, so sixteen thousand pounds?
Yeah, sixteen thousand, five hundred and fifty four.
This was, this was actually, sorry, Jeff, that's, is that the one you're looking at on the front there? That's John's original report in two thousand and twelve, the value of the council contract, but this is back, this is the history of how. The cricket club have taken over the maintenance of the cricket square. And back of two thousand and twelve, you, uh, following discussion, council then offered a proposal, that's an offer of a proposal, allocation project. Seconded by the council to any wicket, so back in two thousand and twelve, it was agreed that. The payment would be eight thousand two hundred and seventy pound a year, a year.
Yeah, all right, all right, that's currently for paying eight thousand two hundred and seventy pounds, it's same thing.
And it's starting to increase. Eight years.
Never want, yeah, on other countries. The ten, forty, the first, anything that has a ticket.
Yeah, we're pocket people, but. People are thirty people. That's a good one. Don't forget, we've got, eight and nine are different too, uh, ranging from up to six years, eight years, up to ten years. Up to fourteen years, up to sixteen years. Like, so, and then there's not, there's even, I have kids. I'd like to join once.
Okay, right, from my perspective, uh, the cricket team came to us and they, uh, the cricket club mentioned that. They wanted to increase the maintenance, a rolling contract that they've had since two thousand and twelve, but it was agreed. And so, because of the significant amount that they were trying to increase by, which was fifty percent. I said I had to put this out to tender, not to tender to, um, other, um, contractors. Yeah, so this is what I have done, and I have given them all the same specification, to have a look at, so they all come back with. On the back page, the prices to maintain the cricket square. And of course, the cricket club has actually come in a lot markedly cheaper than the others. Two are coming in quite a comparable price. Somebody who I know does do quite a lot of South Gloucestershire, uh, cricket pitches, has come in seventeen thousand, whatever. And then of course, the cricket club are suggesting, and I have asked for this to be a three-year, uh, fixed contract.
And then the other aspect is that they're using our equipment.
How much do you put when it's actually purchased by the cricket club, they've actually purchased that model? Uh, a little bit, yeah, so they've invested quite a lot of money. Themselves into the equipment. But there is obviously, um, the list of the machinery that we actually, uh, is.
The road.
Yeah.
I mean, they, they actually put this out, this, the boot.
Yeah.
Move by part.
Yeah. I think that's right, yeah.
Andy, Ed.
Ed? Sorry, Ed. Ed, go ahead.
Hi. I, I, I think the underlying question is, what we as a council provide certain sporting activities. For the betterment of people living in Bradley Stoke. Now, on a per head capital cost, we went out and spent two hundred thousand pounds plus on a skate park.
Yeah, but.
So, how many people use a skate park?
Yeah, but.
So, let's, let's keep the figures, let's keep the figures easy, see? And we say it's thirty people, so thirty people got two hundred thousand pounds spent on the sport they like to do. I, I like dry grass skiing, so you haven't built me a hill, and you haven't built me a mountain.
We can do, we'll find someone, that's where the roof is built.
But I, I think the point, that, that for the cricket club, that we have to, within that consideration to make. We were prepared to put that much outlay for, uh, a particular group with a sport in mind in Bradley Stoke.
They're quite a large group as well.
Yeah, a large group, but then if a head, that would say you can work out. So, my understanding is, if you had eighty, a hundred people, two hundred thousand divided by a hundred is a mess. So we were prepared to put that amount per head for people to enjoy a sport in Bradley Stoke. So I, I think when we come to the cricket point of view, we have to keep that fractal in mind. That there's a group of people that want to play a sport. Now, we as a town council have said, we're here to promote the wellbeing of people that live in Bradley Stoke, Stoke. And if cricket being one of those things that we've already taken on, then we should be fair. We should be fair in our assessment of what we're spending to provide that service. Irrespective of what anyone else does, we are Bradley Stoke, we are different. Right, that's why you've got Calderman Stoke, we are different. It's like, it's like, that we need to be circumspect on the services we give to make this a better place to live in.
Yeah, thanks, Ed, I like that. Um.
I was going to get quotes for twice this week, so.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Do we have the quote on this, do we need to?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I propose that we, we go ahead with the cricket club, uh, apparently.
Is that to include a five yearly, or is that to include a three yearly fix?
Um.
Can you think that?
Probably.
Roger. That, that Michael.
So, the, we're going, talking about here, we've got a proposal, a second year for a five year agreement from this cricket, as big. And we've got, we've got a second, is it, Pedro?
Hang on just a moment, can you, can you, can you, can you actually want to make that figure, um, increasable by the same amount each year as we do for the balls club and other clubs? It went to five, half a percent up.
This is to do with the maintenance, what to do with the, like, the, this is the, the actual, yeah, yeah. So it's a bit, so fixed for the five year.
Going back to what we would say, that quite a bit, the. And we've got, we've got a second, is it, Pedro?
Okay, I'm sick, sorry, can you repeat what was the decision, Michael, I hear you well, I'm actually sick as well, so.
Right, uh, Tom, the, um, what we're building on is the maintenance of the cricket square. At Bakersfield. The cheapest.
My question is. We proposed it to be done by the club, is it we taking it, or are we the, a club taking it?
Club.
The club. It's, it's.
There's various quotes have come in, and the cheapest one is the actual cricket club to themselves, using some of our equipment.
Oh.
Okay.
Is that all right, Tom? Yeah.
Thank you.
So we've got, closing, we've got a second, is in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's move on.
All still.
All still, yeah, thank you, Andy, because I'm in a little bit of a mistake. Right, um, got twenty nine, which is the, uh, repair work for the balls, bollies. And Bakers, at the Bakersfield Activity Centre. If, if anybody's been down there, they, they're shot away, they're, they're, they're coming apart.
Wasn't that long ago, we were down there, was it, didn't Jason and Andy do them, maybe a couple of years?
Yeah, they did, like, ten, yeah, yeah.
And it was not a very good job. You've got it right, Andy, and it, it, it hasn't lasted. Back to, for it.
Yeah, to the, to the.
And we found the picture.
Yeah. So, um, Dell's gone again, and there's another, uh, he's got pretty close to the, the town. I don't expect any more of a good one, Steve, though.
All the specs go out the same, yeah, um, the only.
They just don't break that, that's interesting.
Yeah, that's the company, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So you've got three quotes there, one at four thousand sixty five pounds, one at two thousand eight hundred and ninety pounds, and one at three thousand eight hundred and fifty pounds. That's bad. So the bottom one is probably the most expensive, the top one is secondly expensive, presumably they're a bit different.
The top ones.
But then, well, plus that part as well.
Yeah, it'll be plus that, but that is obviously four thousand, and the bottom one is three.
Three, plus that, it just, it, it just showed it up with the plus that. I'll give you that now, so presumably that's all plus that, which will get back anyway. So the cheapest one is into the landscape. They've all got the same quote, they're the same square quoting off.
So that's the, that's the good one.
Yes.
The other one is synthetic. Same thing. Or, or you've got them.
It's natural grass, and then. And then there is synthetic ones, in an edge, so this is a very specialised, this is the professional company that was recommended by Baldi Man.
Jim, I mean, I mean, considering the relatively small difference in sum. I think we'd be well advised to go with a company which specialises in this sort of work. And, uh, I don't know, Avon there, it looks, it looks quite a difficult job, actually, I do, I do. I, I propose to go with Avon there.
Well, then we've got the first, let go with Avon, what? Okay. Does it, Pedro?
Tom?
Tom? Are you, uh, Tom? Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, right, the next one is, oh. Uh. Option of the scoring matrix for all the tenders. Option of the scoring matrix for all the tenders, uh, for the death of my dream.
Yeah, that's right, um, this was raised purely because we have, I know Graham's, uh, I think we had a matrix running in the, the state part of the council view, to the point here, I don't know. Um, and I think Shannon and Rachel, that there was some email chain about a company, and I mentioned the matrix, it would be more, it would be more. Purely because we have the play area coming up, and it is to just basically. Secure and tighten up when you're actually, um, awarding policies, if you have that quality criteria in place. Uh, and obviously, everything is in the report for you, as some of the discussion, I'm more, think, who actually is to do the thing, you're actually. In previous experience, when you do something like this, you have all the tenders go back to the bar, in a sealed envelope. Yeah, with a. With one as a councillor, or you, at least, yeah, or you can have several councillors, and if you go through that matrix. Together, and come up with the scoring system, so you go, for example, say, if you go over, uh, the quality, the timeliness. So make sure that you have your set standard for, uh, awarding that tender.
Now, a bit to clear something, that's in the first page, down the bottom, that the evaluations will be working as follows. Tell the boss, uh, forty, twenty, I mean, that, have that. Yeah, on the second page, if you're bothered, uh, playing on the door, you can, probably the money. You tell Greg, like, what's that?
No, I didn't, no, this, I didn't.
I'm sorry, why, sorry, can I say that?
Now, I just asked, Jim, is this, um, an original, uh, do you want every part of another class?
This is something that I have used in another council, but this is something to be played with, so it's something that if you decide to. Use it for awarding tenders, it's something that would be, might help you decide how you would like to write. I know, so with these two pages, these pages are just an example of how it would look, but, but that's not what you expect.
I think.
No, you're, no, no, in the previous, of, of scoring matrix.
First page, it's quite like, okay.
Yeah.
Definitely. Or, that's very funny. So, uh, that's good. Right, so.
We're going to repair your, your practice dot E M three, this, or quit, this just needs to be quit.
Yeah.
Yeah? That is, you're one of the. Is it, Pedro?
I'll answer this.
Oh, please.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, uh, okay. Second.
Looks like it.
Yeah. Um, and then, uh. Good, for all sites, place, maintenance. Got that. This is a good.
Yeah, wait, yeah, basically, um.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's easy on your report distribution.
You're right, you're not.
Good work.
Basically, this contract is up for, um, negotiation, and we are currently with the cheapest company, um.
Which one is?
We're in all, they're local, um, it's quite easy to get hold of customers, so it's, can be very good, um. And they're the cheapest.
Is it a three year, a three year fix, that?
Yeah.
Fair, I'll move on.
There you go, we've got one, very solid, good, definite.
Yeah.
Is it, Pedro? Okay, you're naming it.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
All right, let's have the, uh, the bills direct debit repayment, everyone's got this one.
I'm going to see if she'll use that, this way.
Was that last match, nineteen eighty?
She was, yeah.
But, so I can give you, whilst you asked a question about cricket, I can give you a quick update, so. The, our new sergeant is Claire Lee King, Claire Lee King, she's pumped and C I B, she's a newly promoted sergeant, so she has to. Have no good beat sergeant. Uh, please, Sergeant Jamie Shields is on long term stipally with a knee injury. Uh, P C Claire Flatter is our P C doctor. One of our P C S Os, Justina, she went to Fulbury, the other P C S O, Amelia, has just got to play within the regular P C S O, so we will be getting two more new P C S Os.
All in a sort of limbo, I think.
I think it's a bit more of a.
So, that's why we tend to get in a lot of them, with, with.
Yes, they're just.
Um, we, we, actually, we think of building a year, and then we, for ages, we do the payment, uh, interview processes. The purity of, of things.
They seem to do much better in Northampton, like, I see.
Please, please, hand up.
So, um. Okay, sorry? Yeah, we want to say something, Keith? Okay, sorry. Yeah, you wanna say something, Keith? No?
Uh, I was saying, Chair, it was up from last time, but just as an update, I mean, I know the police are having an intake now. Uh, a lot of our current P C S Os, ours in Stockdelford is coming back as a regular. Uh, I know Amelia, I think, is up to the same, uh, group going in. And obviously, there will be, eventually, hopefully, uh, you you know, an increase in our footfall of policemen, but having said that, we are losing them off their beats and leaving the forest all the time, so, you know, we're going to catch up.
Yeah.
It's mine for our new P C C, of course. For her or she, maybe?
Uh, well, you'd get your birthday, right?
Other than the expenditures, it's going to put you back there, um, one query is the, the pup connect might be probably foot rest.
That's a foot rest for a.
Foot.
True, even.
I was gonna say for a leisure assistant who is a bit tall to that. From a health and safety part, for a foot rest or a feet.
I'm not sure we should be supporting the lack of, right?
Maybe there's a hostess.
Max must, we start, we start, yeah.
Rest, that should be wrist rest.
Why are we supporting the black equality?
It's just color.
Missing E on the skate park as well.
Right?
The missing E on the skate park means something entirely different.
Hear that? Hear that, that one, the skate park, sorry. My apologies.
Not, not present.
Weird. What? Whereas the batteries, whereas, um, I mean, I'm a bit, well.
They're recharged, although the specimens are.
Yes, everyone's, the new ones.
Really? That was true, the.
The one, yeah, yeah.
The, the, the.
These are the. Very, very much a question that, I must say, we did actually question that, and BSO did that.
Your battery, even even being rechargeable. The T R rechargeable. Okay, so, anyway, those in favour in the, or sorry, we need a proposal for the, the, the question. And, please, those in, those in favour? Yeah, I think what you have.
Thank you.
Oh, got them then, all right, now, we're down to the, um, item thirteen, fifteen point one, annual view of the, the ten pounds a year forward plan.
You have that in your agenda pack with all the preparation management, I liked it and added in.
Look, I don't have more comment, it isn't important. Pictures on the point for about ten years, I think, and things have changed now.
Well, I can look to change the pictures, that might, quite likely.
We've got old notes, yeah, old notes. Got my things, uh.
Yeah, but.
The broken, uh, edges of the body.
But that is non-important, I think, that's not important.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I can definitely change pictures.
We, we, we.
It's rewritten every year, like Rachel's.
Like you're saying.
I know, but it's just refreshed, like Rachel's refreshed, the, uh, accounting and the banking.
He's still sticking it as well. Yeah.
No, his name won't go in the file, it's just the fact that it shows that he wrote.
We'll get back to spit, that.
Yes, it will.
Okay, so, um, we need to propose, somebody wants to propose a forward plan?
Yeah, I proposed, Chair.
Please, second person, Michael, sorry, Ed, you're out of the second slate, nothing second to the other one. Uh, so those in favour? Uh, you, Anna.
Thank you.
Right, so, um, right, so town council policies and procedures, worthy update, link to parental freedom, believe, regulations twenty twenty.
So these you can do all in one go because you approved the policies, um, back in January, it is.
Pay by, paternity fee, pay by, paternity fee, pay by, and care for rental people and pay by.
So just introduction of an extra new point linked to be, which hopefully we won't add in with the parental freedom, I think, very much.
I'll move in, Chair.
Hey, what, you proposed, fifth second, uh, Rog, and those in favour? Your ball. Yeah, you know.
Thank you. All right.
Right, um, so, fifty to confirm the dates for the next meeting, twenty fourth, twenty fourth March, and then, I think, they go, they're being presented against. Where's the April five, uh, twenty April five, and five, and four, and five, and I am, and I'm, so that. So, thank you very much for your attendance.
Thank you, Chair, twenty one.